All right. Good evening, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started tonight. Welcome to the City Council meeting for Monday, September 12th. We're gonna go ahead and start the meeting with the invocation given by Dr. Darren McClellan of Fairhope United Methodist Church.
Let us pray. Merciful God, on this week of remembrance, we continue to give thanks for those who serve in sacrificial ways. And so, as our minds are filled with the images of many years ago and the sacrifices of those who have continued to bear witness to their own commitment to their neighbor and to the love of God, Lord, we ask for your continued blessing upon these friends who gather today to do your work for the sake of this community. Use us, stretch us, melt us, and mold us, we pray, with your grace and with your wisdom. We pray these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, council, the first item, and we are pulling item number 24 from the agenda, and then beyond that, the first item is to approve the minutes of the August 22 meeting and the August 22 work session.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. You've got a motion and a second. Any further comments? Changes? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mayor, your report.
I'll come to the podium, because I have a couple proclamations tonight. The first one, we actually do not have anybody here who is accepting this proclamation, but it's to proclaim it Constitution Week in the City of Fairhope. It says, "Whereas it is a privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States with appropriate ceremonies and activity, whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. So now therefore I, Sherry Sullivan, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Fairhope, do hereby proclaim September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights, responsibilities which that privilege involves." So, thank you.
Thank you.
The second one I have is to commemorate Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And we do have representatives here for that. I know who they were by dressed in the yellow when they came in. Thank y'all for being here. So, it gives me great pleasure to proclaim Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, and whereas 46 children per day are diagnosed with cancer in the United States, there are approximately 40,000 children on active treatment at any given time, and whereas the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of childhood cancer and associated need for increased funding to carry this out. And whereas in the last 10 years, only four new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specifically meet/ treat childhood cancer, and whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently dedicating their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer, and it is vital to those affected by childhood cancer have access to quality, affordable healthcare, and that research of all forms of childhood cancer continue to be supported. Whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. I now therefore I, Sherry Sullivan, Mayor of the City of Fairhope, do hereby proclaim September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Fairhope and recognize the determination and bravery of these children who fight their battles against cancer and should be recognized and commended by all. So, thank y'all.
Amen.
Would you like to say something?
I'd like to say, I'm just very glad to be a part of the Go Flag and the Buck Case and hope you can all join this fire ball that we have.
Wonderful. Good, thank you. And I see you're wearing your gold to commemorate it. That's right. So, it's gold, go gold for childhood cancer. So, thank y'all for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd like to do a picture before y'all leave, so I'll meet you out there. Yep, we'll put one right out in the lobby before we leave. Thank y'all. The only other thing I wanted to do was, again, thank the police department for commemorating September 11th with their ceremony on Friday. I would just really appreciate them continuing to keep that tradition alive, them and the fire department for doing that, just driving in and seeing the flag hanging over the street and going there and being part of that ceremony is pretty special every year. Also, want to remind everybody that we have coastal cleanup coming up this Saturday. So, if you are not assigned to a location and you'd like to participate, you can show up down at the pier that morning, they will assign you to a location. It's always great fun, they will give you, after you clean up, will have hot dogs and, you know, hot dogs and drinks and chips, and just really a great time to clean up our community and especially our beaches. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next item on the agenda is public participation. This is for agenda items only, so if you would like to speak to the council on items five through 25, you have three minutes. Come to the podium and give Jenny your name and address, and you've got three minutes to address the council. And we will have a time at the end of the meeting for any other comments that are outside of agenda items. Floor is open. Yes, sir.
My name is JJ McCool, and I'm a property owner down on Fly Creek. And I literally, unfortunately, I don't know any of the people personally, but I know there's some discussion about the liveaboards that live over at the Fly Creek Marina across from my property. And man, just to do a good turn they've done for me, I know there's a lot of infrastructure and things like that that have to be in place for you to have liveaboards. And so, I know y'all are probably dealing with all that and all anything about it, but I will say this, the folks that are over there, since I've owned that property now for all over a decade, they have several times have bailed myself and other folks out at the big marina and other, by watching out for people's boats, by also for watching for weird activity kids. I get called typically, they'll go to the manager over at the marina, Sean or someone like that, or Jenny, and they'll call me, just because I guess they know I'll get out there and check on it and someone's boat or something. So, I'll say this, while you're considering that, and I know it's probably a lot of other things, it is a lot of things going into it, those folks have really helped me out before by watching out for everybody. They're kind of just, they're liveaboards, they're a little different, but they're big, really good watchdogs. And so, I told the folks that asked me about it, I said, "You know what? Y'all have always done this for me, so I want to come and speak a little bit for them." So, just keep that when you're considering it, okay?
Thank you. I appreciate you speaking up, JJ.
This is JJ McCool, my last appearance is in Pittsburgh.
From Moss Point, Mississippi.
Pull the good old bag, please, man.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone else like to address the council? This is agenda items five through 24. Seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close the floor. This time, we'll move on to council comments, starting with Councilman Burrell.
Yeah. Chief, sorry I didn't make the 9/11 ceremony on Friday. I was at a fundraiser for the school, so that's a semi-decent excuse, anyway. I do want to give a shout out to the Fairhope Pirates football team, 4-0 right now, ranked in top 5 in the state, so try to make it out to the ballgames if you can. You can watch it on Pirate Nation Live, they've just got some incredible commentators bringing you all the games live, so when you can't make it, so just a shout out to the Pirates. Unfortunately, I don't know what the other teams are doing. I don't know how St. Michael's doing. Are they doing pretty good?
2-2.
Okay. All right. So, a shout out to them as well. That's it.
Councilman Martin.
I don't have anything to make.
No comments. Councilman Robinson?
Yeah, just to piggyback, not only is it high school and college football season, but it's also rec football season, and so we started this past weekend, so if you haven't watched a nine and 10-year-old tackle football game, you hadn't really done anything. So, they really, they really put a lot of work into it. And so, if you get a chance in the next six, eight weeks, want to head down to Barham, come check us out.
You're playing?
Yeah. I am one of the biggest 10-year-olds in the town, that is correct.
Councilman Boone?
No comment.
All right, I don't have any comments either. At this time, we'll move on to item number five. This is a final adoption. Final adoption, we don't need to introduce this, right? It's already been introduced. All right, final adoption ordinance, this is an ordinance to amend, ordinance number 1754, known as Right-Away Construction and Administration Ordinance Section 10, Schedule of Fees for Rights-Away and Excavation Permit Fees. It was introduced August 22 at the council meeting. And council, if you need additional info, Eric can cover that for us, but he's covered it, I think, a couple times now.
We've covered it in a work session, yeah. I think we covered it in a work session and in the last meeting pretty well, so I'm gonna make a motion for final adoption.
All right, I've got a motion and a second for final adoption. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Clerk, if you'll call the question.
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Ordinance passes. Number six is also a final adoption of an ordinance, and this is ordinance authorizing and granting to MediaCom Southeast LLC the right to use rights-of-way of the City of Fairhope to provide cable services to the citizens of the city under terms of Cable Television System Franchise Agreement, and this was also introduced at the August 22 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We've got a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. Any further discussion, council?
I have one. Kim, maybe you can answer this. Did Mr. Fender, I know there was some back and forth, and he has seen the final addition of this ordinance? Mayor shaking her head, yes? Okay. That's, I mean, I put a lot of faith in him, that he scoured it and approved all of it, right?
All right. Any other questions? Clerk, if you'll call the question.
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
And place five.
Aye.
All right. Ordinance passes. Item number seven is a resolution that the City Council approves and authorizes the deed restrictions to be attached to the land known as the Triangle Park and authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to work with the Fairhope Single Tax Corporation on preparing these deed restrictions for said property, and that the City Council approves and authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to have a deed for the Triangle Park property prepared and deeded to the Fairhope Single Tax Corporation for them to prepare a deed back to the City of Fairhope with the deed restrictions included in said deed. This will be a simultaneous transaction, so it is just on, really, a paper transaction going to the single tax, coming right back to us. Mayor, would you like to?
I'd be happy to. This is something we've talked about, I think, for quite a while now, but, you know, we know that the parklands that have been deeded to us in the past from single tax have kind of stood the test of time, and we have all collectively talked about how we would like to maintain the triangle as parklands and as green space. This is just another layer that will allow us to maintain that space. If there was another administration that came in who wanted to change something, they would have to not only go through the City Council, the City Council approved it, then it would have to go to the Single Tax Board, and then it could ultimately go to their membership for a vote. So, there would be a lot of, you know, a lot of layers to go through for somebody to do something on that property other than what the intent is. That's why we put these deed restrictions in place. So, the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board helped draft these to begin with. There was some input from the council. We took that input, modified some things, and then took it back to FEAB on Friday, let them look through it again, and give us their blessings. So, I feel like we've got a good product here and hopefully something that will maintain that park as green space well into the future.
All right. Council, I know y'all probably had a chance to see this. Were there any concerns or any questions for the mayor? Any recommended adjustments? Is everybody good with the language in there?
Council President and I have one recommendation.
Yes, sir.
And I think the easiest way to do it, and I know that it could be in a, you know, in a management plan, but I'd rather have it in the overlying legislation on the deed prohibitions, and I think the easiest way to put this language in would be under item three, and you could put it in as C and move C to D, or you could call this D under statement three, and I would like to add the language, and it would be, it says, "Except as required for," so that's the beginning of the ABC or D. Except as required for, and I'd like to add, "The removal of non-native invasive species." So, number three has to do with, you're not, you cannot remove, destroy, or cut trees or shrubs or other vegetation, but I would like to add that you can, basically, that you could remove non-native invasive species. My concern is the popcorn trees and the camphor trees are taking over this city, and we've got to do something about it. And I don't want to get into an argument 20 years down the road and say that wasn't our intent, when they're gonna, they're gonna take that parcel over if we don't get them in check. So, I would like to make that. When we make the motion, I'd like to include that language.
All right, so to that, to that point, I think Councilman Burrell makes a good point that, you know, we can obviously include that in the master plan for the property, but if you put it in the deed language itself, then there's no debate about what the intent was and what the, what the mission was, so. Council, would y'all please keep that in consideration when you consider making a motion? Any additional questions for the mayor? Anyone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve with the change that Councilman Burrell recommended regarding the non-native invasive species.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion, two seconds. Any further conversation, any further questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. Item number eight is a resolution that the legal counsel for the city is authorized to resolve the pending real property dispute with Penelope Johnson by payment in the amount of $16,000 in exchange for a deed and other appropriate documents approved by council for the city, and that Mayor Sherry Sullivan is authorized to execute all documents and agreements to consummate the settlement on behalf of the city.
So, move.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion, any questions for Marcus? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, council. Item number nine is a resolution that Mayor Sherry Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a reciprocal agreement between Baldwin County, Alabama, Baldwin County Revenue Commissioner's Office, and the City of Fairhope for exchanging information relating to building permit information and related documents. This agreement will be for a period of three years and automatically renew annually thereafter. Mayor, I just saw the part about renewing automatically thereafter. Is this a new agreement, or is this, if we just never had that automatic renewal period there? Sorry about that, I didn't mean to make you get up for that one question.
It's a newer agreement, to my understanding, but a lot of it is the information exchange has changed, whereas before it was hard copy. We ran copies of permits and sent them physically to the county. Now, it's done through CitizenServe where they can pull off and look at it, and am I correct in assuming it's Citizen Serve is requiring, because it's an intergovernmental agreement where we're sharing information across the platform? And that's my understanding of what it is.
Yes, sir.
Eric, there, I saw something here about subscriptions. Is there a big income or revenue, I mean payout for this as far as subscriptions is concerned? Do we have to worry about that in the budget?
The way Citizen Serve works is we pay per subscriber. They don't have, they didn't have a software fee or anything like that. We pay an annual fee for each user, and I'm assuming there may be a subscription that is required by the county to the city or vice versa for them to be able to access the information.
But we don't know that number yet or anything. Okay.
Each party, so if the county needs to have a subscription to view our information, they would be responsible for obtaining their own subscription and then vice versa.
All right. Any additional questions for Eric? Anyone like to make a motion?
So move.
All right, we've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 10 is a resolution that Mayor Sherry Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute an indemnity agreement between Ocolo Farm and the City of Fairhope for the city's Christmas event for city employees at the barn on Friday, December 9th, from noon to 3:30 PM.
So move.
All right, you've got a motion and a second. Do this every year, pretty much, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item number 11 is a resolution that the City Council hereby approves and amends the rules and regulations for the city, or for the Fairhope docks for paragraphs 21, 30, 32, and 33. Mayor, would you mind, I think I know there was some conversation on this item.
And I think there's probably one area that needs to be revised, but basically, this is a policy that was put in place several years ago, and it, we, some of it's housekeeping. Some of it is, I don't think the intent when the council, when the previous council put this in place, that they intended for liveaboards to be there for long-term, because they thought that through attrition, that they would start, you know, weaning themselves out, but that just really hasn't happened. We've actually added a liveaboard. So, this resolution will, will affect immediately, liveaboards will no longer be permitted at the docks. They will be given 60 days' notice to vacate the property. And vessels and outside workers must present certificate of liability insurance. Right now, the way it was worded is that we can ask them for proof, but it doesn't say that we're going to be doing that annually, so the staff did not feel like they could approach them annually and say, "I want your registration, I want your insurance." So, we changed that language to say that you have to provide that annually, specifically for things like, you know, hurricanes and all that kind of stuff. We need to make sure their insurance is placed, their registration is current, so we want to make sure we make that clear. And then, one thing is about long-term slip leaseholders are allowed to park one vehicle at the docks. That will no longer, nobody will be assigned parking spaces, because there'll be no long-term slipholders there. The last section, number 33, is probably where it needs to be changed, and this is completely my fault. Talking with the city clerk, we talked about, and Councilman Boone and I talked about, you know, we have loopers that come in, people who just go from marina during season to visit different areas, and talked to the city clerk about adding some language in there, and I think when we added loopers, we probably meant transients. I think Councilman Burrell used that. But shall be permitted to remain on their vessel, and I think y'all wanted to establish a time period that they would be able to do that. So, that's what I'm looking for your direction on, and we can change the resolution just to reflect whatever your wishes are.
Sounds good. Council, I know, Councilman Burrell, I know we've had some conversations about this.
Yes, sir.
If you would like to go ahead and start with you.
Yeah, I'd like to start, actually, and I'm gonna hit on all but one of these. I'm gonna start with the last one, though, item 33, and Mayor, yes, you're correct. I think, I don't think we should use the term loopers, because it could be any transient boater, whether you're coming from Biloxi, Mississippi, or Destin, Florida, and you want to spend some time in Fairhope. So, I would propose to change 33 to these words, "Transient boaters shall be permitted to remain on their vessels, but no longer than 30 days." And I had talked about seven days, 14 days, 30 days. Councilman Boone is on the harbor board, and just one calculation for you, they don't pay $10 per foot per month like, like the permanent slip renters do. They pay $1.75 per foot per day. So, if they're on a 40-foot boat, they're paying $70 a day, which is $2,800 a month. So, we're not gonna have a problem with somebody trying to live down at the marina if they're paying this daily rate. It's self-policing, so I believe that Councilman Boone, who made the suggestion to make that 30 days, and in hindsight, I agree with that, because we do make revenue, not only at the marina, but we get sales tax revenue. A lot of times, these transient boaters, most often loopers, do come into town and spend their money at restaurants and shops and the such. So, that was one change that I recommend. Item number 32, I'd like to maybe add a clause. It says, "There will be no overnight parking or long-term parking permitted except for the long-term slipholders on an extended trip." Right after for long-term slipholders, I would like to add, "And their guests on an extended trip." Because if you're going on an extended trip, you probably have somebody that's driven down there in a separate vehicle that's gonna get on the boat and go with you, and I feel like that would be a welcome change. And it also does say that the manager has to be advised of said trip, so part of that advising would be to advise that, hey, that's my vehicle, and the four men and women that came in that vehicle, they're with me as well. And then, lastly, on number 21, where it says, "The vessels and outside workers must present certificate of liability insurance." The marina that I keep my boat at requires me to name the marina as the additionally insured, and so I would think it would be wise to add the City of Fairhope as additionally insured. And I want to make sure that we're, we're doing this at the right time, at the renewal date. Sean, I wanted to ask you that. Is the renewal date the right time? I assume it is, but...
All of our leases are month-to-month, so they renew on the first of the month, every month?
Yeah, and the other problem is these haven't been checked annually, because they didn't feel like they had the authority, because it doesn't say annually in the rules.
So, if they're month-to-month, and we're saying we'll check it annually, you can't really, that's too much work to do it every month, I would think, so what's the solution?
I would, I would say when their license is due, or their registration is due, is by, I guess, your last name, just like car tags, so I would think that's when you would do it annually.
I would, all right, well, you could just put in there, "At least once annually," maybe as a catch-all phrase, "At least once annually." And how would you word that, Marcus, for naming the city as additionally insured?
City shall be...
I've never been in a marina that didn't require that.
Yeah, just provide proof of the insurance, and I don't remember, part of the lease that we've got says, "Whole insurance and several other types of insurance." Can we just say, "Provide copies annually with the City of Fairhope listed as additionally insured on policy?" That's, that's all you have to say.
Okay.
Can we change in the lease, can we change the lease terms up, or is this just a...
This is about liability.
Just the lease, or the lease and the rules? Because the lease has got something on there about that, and this will be something additionally.
This is the dock rules and regulations, yeah. That's what they sign, it's the same thing.
That's it.
So, Jack, one question.
Yes, sir.
On the change on 32, if I'm following, just to clarify, the second, middle of that paragraph, it speaks on the overnight parking, on long-term parking permitted except for long-term slipholders. Did you want transients to be involved in that?
No, no, it was just, it just says, these are, these are, this is concerning the long-term slipholders, so it would just say, "Except for long-term slipholders and their guests on an extended trip."
Do you want to change long-term to transient boaters or transient slip?
Well, but I think now, you saw my people that are actually in the marina or in the docks.
What I'm asking is, the same question that you said at the beginning, in the middle here, if they have company, are you allowing their company to be allowed to park in that parking lot as well?
Well, I was thinking that the transient boaters that 33 refers to, you know, I don't, I don't think that they're gonna have somebody come down there and join them to stay on their boat. These people are staying at the dock on the boat, and they're probably from out of town, and if they invite somebody to come visit them, there's probably not gonna be any overnight parking. It might be somebody that knows somebody in Fairhope, and they'll say, "Come see me, I'm down at the marina," but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that you're giving rights to overnight parking to them.
Okay, so you're just talking about people who have slips down there who may leave on their boat and go somewhere.
Yeah, only in 32, which it says, "No overnight parking or long-term parking permitted except for long-term slipholders on an extended trip, long-term slipholders and their guests on an extended trip."
Okay, got it.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Does anybody need a recap of that, or is everyone kinda good?
I'm sure the clerk will review the video many times to get that, and I can give you the exact thing as everyone needs.
Councilman, any suggestions down here on this end? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion with those three changes that I proposed.
Got a second? Motion and a second on that? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Thank you for those changes. Item number 12 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope authorizes submission of an HMGP grant to AEMA requesting grant funds to construct a first responder safe room estimated $2,433,687.05 $2,433,687.05 of project cost, and the City of Fairhope is matching funds estimated $270,409.67. And that the city authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to sign all required grant application documents on behalf of the city. Jessica's covered this in pretty good detail, and, and we also get a valuation of our property injected. So the actual cash out-of-pocket on behalf of the city for this construction of safe room grant is estimated to be $113,000 to $114,000. So appreciate your work on that, Jessica. She's gone.
Where's she gone?
She had a bomb.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion, counsel? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 13 is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Magnolia River as consultant for RFQ PS 1522 for natural gas engineering consulting services, and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit with this firm. As Wes pointed out, this is what, this is the consulting firm they would like to use for the leak-prone piping.
There you go.
So I picked up on the new, the new terminology.
Yeah, that's right. We're gonna go with that.
All right. Any, any questions for Wes, or would you like to cover in any more detail? Is everyone good with that?
So moved.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I was just gonna say, Wes, I did read over that proposal, and I did look at the scores that staff had given them, and they had some really high marks, and it looked like a pretty good outfit. I don't know that we have any experience with them, but.
We got a little bit of experience with them, but they are, they're well-versed in this, in this type of work.
Yeah, appeared they were, yep. Okay.
All right, thank you. So we got a, a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number 14 is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Southern Earth Sciences for Professional Engineering Services for asbestos inventory and an abatement plan at the K-1 Center, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract within not-to-exceed amount of $10,400. And as we discussed, Richard discussed in pretty good detail, this is a requirement of the HUD and EDA grant money to not only have this identified, but to also have it removed prior to construction docks. So it sounds like they can get on this pretty quickly, and it won't even impact the timeframe of the project or the bid process. So any further questions for Richard on this, or?
Just clarification, I think it's just the plan, it doesn't include the removal.
Right, it's just an abatement plan.
It's still pretty inexpensive, though.
We'll, we'll be coming back with a, another, another proposal for removal, yeah.
Don't tell them how cheap they are.
I was about to say, don't. Maybe somebody will do it for free.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 15 is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract for professional landscape architectural services for the Gomez grant, grant-funded capital improvement project in the Triangle property with Thompson Engineering, Inc., who will partner with Watershed LLC for RFQ PS 001-22 with a negotiated not-to-exceed amount of $163,500, and fees are reimbursable on the grant are in the amount of $107,141.71. And I thought if, if Chris Grant is here with Thompson, and we've got Rebecca Bryant here with Watershed, if y'all want to just speak to the project at all, you, you came and you, you sat through a, a lot, you've earned a, earned a few minutes of the microphone.
Great, thank y'all.
Yeah.
Thanks, counsel, president, council members. I'm Christopher Grant with Thompson Engineering. Rebecca Bryant with Watershed. We're both local residents here in Fairhope, so this is a very important project for us. We drive past it multiple times a day, and so we understand the value of this property and what it means to the citizens here. Thompson has also been working on Watershed management plan for the eastern shore, and we have a long history of the Fly Creek restoration study that was performed in 2013. So we, we have a pretty good understanding in this property, and we certainly want to see it put to good use, which is why we've teamed with Rebecca. And so we want to make this a great project for our community. We also understand this is the front door to our community. So we want to make a good impression, you know, not only to the citizens here, but to visitors, you know, that continue to come into town. So thank y'all for this opportunity. We look forward to working with y'all. Rebecca, anything else?
I'll just add briefly, we're really excited about this project. We're always looking for projects that marry economic development with environmental restoration. And the statewide comprehensive outdoor recreation assessment happened last year, and they identified how important these kind of outdoor recreation areas are for workforce development. So it's not just for, for us, for our kids, it's, it's making it a better place for, for young people to settle and stay. As a parent, to me, that also means my kids, my, to come back and, and settle in Fairhope. So Christopher really said it all, we're excited about it, and an opportunity to be a part of the city doing such a great thing.
Counsel, would y'all like to ask any questions of Christopher or Rebecca?
I want to make a couple of comments.
Yes, sir.
I want to make a couple of comments. Christopher, I'm glad you brought up the fact that Thompson Engineering's been involved with looking at that property and plans for that since 2013. I remember walking around with that plan, walking around Washington DC, looking for grant money, as, as much as nine years ago. And Rebecca, great, great partner, and I have a lot of respect for, for what you do and your work. And both of you, you know, your passion for the city, so I think we have a, a great team. And I, and I've said this to this council before, and I'm going to say it again, when you, when you look back in the future, on your time that you spend on this council, I will promise you that what you do with that land, you know, that 108 acres of land that we're, we're trying to preserve and do something nice with, will be one of your greatest accomplishments. I can promise you that.
Yeah, I agree 100% with that, Councilmember Burrell.
Yep, I agree.
Be here long after we're all gone, so.
Yep. No pressure.
Yeah. I feel, I feel really comfortable with you, Chris.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, and, and, and my lady Rebecca. Hey, we got a great team, man. I'm excited.
Any, any other questions or comments for Christopher, Rebecca, or Richard Johnson? Any of the three of them, they did a good job presenting this earlier.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. All right. Any, any further questions? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I got this, I got, I beat him on the second.
All right, motion, motion passes. Item number 16, this is the second part of this, and this is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract for professional services for public engagement and master planning for the Triangle Park Capital Improvement Project, Gomez Grant, and with Thompson Engineering, who will partner with Watershed with a negotiated not-to-exceed amount of $29,700, and no grant funds will be used for public engagement and master planning services on the contract. To the point Christopher said, this is, this is one where, you know, no pressure. So in that case, this, this is kind of outlining the fact that we're not going to be doing this in a vacuum, there's going to be a public engagement component to this. And those that are going to be helping us draw up the plan are also going to be helping lead that public engagement and master planning approach to this. So any questions about that portion of the contract?
That ought to be fine.
All right. Anyone wish to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number 17 is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute change order number one for the Pecan Building Phase II West Wing office remodel for project increase not to exceed $3,315. MW Rogers Construction, new contract total will be $230,000, or $230,461. This was to address a little bit of termite damage that had been discovered. Any questions for Richard? Or do anyone like to make a motion on this item?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion carries. Item number 18 is a resolution that the city council hereby authorizes the issuance of a $1,946,719 master equipment lease purchase award to United Bank at an interest rate of 1.79 fixed as a bank-qualified, tax-exempt rate with a three-year term. And the equipment with provisions will be, will be financed if the city council approves and authorizes the execution of any and all related documents by the city council president, mayor, city clerk, and treasurer necessary to authorize and affect the issuance of closing of the master equipment lease purchase. And that the city council approves the bond counsel Preston Bolt Jr. of Hand, Arundel, Harrison, sale to prepare all closing documents, and the United Bank will pay the closing costs up to $6,500. And Kim covered this in pretty good detail during the work session. Again, this is not an increase in price for the lease, it is not a lease where we have to return it at the end. This is just a financing mechanism for the city to basically, it's a three-year loan is what it equates to, at 1.79%, and it's for the list of equipment that was provided by Kim. Several of the items are carryovers from the 2022 budget cycle, and some are 2023 items that have yet to be fully approved, but we anticipate them being approved. So any questions for Kim?
Make a motion to approve.
We've got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, I want to say that, that this is a great rate, and, you know, the first year's a little shy of $35,000 in interest, and then, of course, it'll be less than that the second and third years. But, but I don't, I don't want this to be, I'd, I'd rather this still be the exception. I'd still like to pay as we go. We, we got ourselves out of debt so that we could do that. And I know we got a lot going on, I just, I don't want this to be the trend. I'd rather the trend be that we, that we can afford what we get. And I think we're getting a lot, and we got a great rate. And it's very short-term as well, but, you know, even saving $50,000 or so over three years goes a long way. Buys another piece of equipment.
Good comments. I agree with that as well. Any additional comments, counsel? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 19 is a resolution to award bid 34-22 to Roof Doctors of Alabama for the Fairhope Recreation Center and Municipal Pool Complex Roof, trim, and soffit repair with a total bid proposal not to exceed $83,090. Richard covered that, and at least a portion of that is insurance reimbursable, correct?
$30,000, fifty-nine dollars.
All of it will be?
We can, we can apply for what's not being covered up. We can apply for what they didn't.
Okay. Okay.
But on this one, on that, so you're saying we can come back? Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
I'll move to award the bid.
We got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 20 is a resolution to award bid 3722 to BCM Moore &amp; Company for the new ballpark bathrooms at Founders and Volanta Parks with a total bid proposal not to exceed And again, Richard covered this in the work session. Any questions for Richard on this item?
Richard, at, at Volanta, what all is that going to include? You said it's going to replace the existing bathrooms, but, I mean.
It's going to replace the bathroom at Founders.
Oh, okay, it's going to be the new bathrooms at Volanta. Maybe I misunderstood that. Okay, I'm with you.
The new bathroom at Volanta.
All right, had to clarify that. Okay, great.
It's a new one at Volanta as well, right?
New at Volanta.
A new at Founders. Okay, yep.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 21 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope has voted to purchase one 2022 Ford Explorer with an XLT package or equivalent for the police department, and the type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing bid list and does not need to be let out for bid. The cost will not exceed $31,308. This is not a, a police-equipped vehicle, but it's to replace a vehicle that was totaled about three months ago. So that's why the price is a little bit cheaper than a fully outfitted vehicle.
Chief Insurance is covering this as well, correct?
Just $13,000 worth.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Sorry, got a motion and?
I'll second.
And a second. Would anyone like to make any additional comments, or?
So was the total price $31,000, or was the total price $44,000?
No, total price is $31,000.
Okay, all right, great. All right.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item 22 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of one 300 KVA three-phase pad mountain transformer from Maddox for the new obstetrics building, and the customer will reimburse the costs. Procurement authorized based on transformers are exempt from formal bidding per the Code of Alabama. Total cost not to exceed $16,430. Ben mentioned a 10- to 12-week lead time on that. And again, that is going to be paid for by the.
Already paid for.
Already, already paid for by the developer.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item 23 is a resolution that the city council hereby approves the procurement of a new awning for the Pecan Street Building to Art Craft Awning Company with a not-to-exceed amount of $6,732.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions for Richard?
Just, just one, one quick question.
Yes, sir.
The quote on the form says $6,776, and the resolution says $6,732. There's a $44 difference, I just want to.
One says 32.
It's all 32, you get all 32.
The green sheet says 32.
Well, the request. I don't want to approve too little and have to come back.
Yeah, the green sheet has 32 as well, so.
Well, I'm looking at the.
No, 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 I'm just saying, the, the correct number should be 32.
Actually, actually, their quote says $6,732. I see. When it was tabulated, the tabulations has it wrong. That's what I was looking at. I was looking at the tab.
So are we good?
I think we're good.
Where are we?
If not, Councilman Boone said he'll make up the 44 bucks.
And we have to check with our, our legal team to make sure that's. We don't want to get stuck in the mud.
All right, so we, we comfortable with that amount?
I'll make a motion, we approve up to $6,766, whatever that number was, the higher number.
That'll cover it.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. And a second. All those in favor of that emotion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes.
Do you say in favor of that emotion or that motion?
That motion.
I favor that emotion also.
Okay. That motion.
Is that a song? I digress.
You second that emotion.
Second, yeah, that's right. I knew that was a song.
All right, item 24, that's been pulled from the agenda. So the new item 24, which is item 25, this is a resolution that the bids for the disaster-related emergency tree service, bid 35-22, are hereby rejected and to allow Mayor Sherry Sullivan to negotiate a contract with the one responsive bidder, KDF Enterprises LLC, per the Code of Alabama. And that's just for the pre-placed contract for tree service in the event of a storm.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Next item is the appointment of Josh Turner to the Parking Authority. And Josh, if I'm thinking correctly, this is Lee's son, okay? So he's a young gentleman. I know he wants to be involved and certainly has a vested interest in parking with a downtown business, so...
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on Mr. Turner? All right, all those in favor of his appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Next item up is public participation. And the floor is open. You've got an opportunity to speak for three minutes on anything you wish to address the council on. All right, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the floor. Mayor, anything else we need to cover? All right, we're good. In that case, I will consider a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The ayes have it.
There he is.